It's seven o'clock. I'll call the meeting to order. I'm Grace Lusprance, Cascade Township Supervisor. Clerk Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Nordhook.
Here.
Trustee McDonald.
Here.
Supervisor Lusprance.
Here.
Treasurer Corstange.
Here.
Trustee Kessel.
Here.
Trustee Shipley.
Present.
And Clerk Slater here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The United States of America, the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just as for all.
Is there a motion or discussion for approval of tonight's agenda?
Shipley makes a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Of course. So, motion by trustee Shipley, supported by treasurer Corstange. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Article four, we have one presentation this evening. We will recognize two members of our fire department who are moving up in the ranks. And on behalf of the Board of Trustees, thank you everyone for your service in Cascade. Chief Majors, the floor is yours.
Thanks Supervisor Lusprance, we appreciate it. Love it. Thanks everybody for coming. These are a fun way to celebrate the start of two new careers. Twenty-four years ago, when I swore in as a new firefighter out of the academy, I remember how excited I was to just put the uniform on and go to work. And I'm hopeful that these two new firefighters that I'm welcoming into the fire family, share that excitement and keep it for those twenty-four, thirty-five, thirty-five years to come. So, we couldn't be more excited for the two individuals that we've got joining our roster. So, we just wanted to thank you for coming. I want to thank the Board for taking time out of your agenda. I know that you solved all the township's problems on Wednesday, so we're giving you a few minutes to celebrate something happy for once. So, we appreciate indulging us on this event. So, the first thing we do is we call the firefighters and they will take an oath of office in front of the Board, in front of the public. And then they'll have a loved one pin their badge. It's a tradition that we've carried on here at Cascade Fire for many years. And hopefully, they'll be swearing in firefighters when they've got twenty-five, thirty years on themselves. So, we're excited to bring up our first firefighter if Kyle May will come on up. So, Kyle comes from us, a little bit of experience came from Greenville Fire Department and then most recently, Kana Township Fire Department. The connection with Kyle was that he worked for Triangle Construction and was a superintendent on our fire station build. And so, a complicated project like a fire station for a firefighter to be the superintendent and keep that complicated project under budget and on time, it really spoke volumes about his work ethic and his knowledge. And so, we decided to hire him up so he could take care of that building for the next fifty years. So, we appreciate his expertise. You ready?
Sure.
Raise your right hand, repeat after me. I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will defend. Enforce and support.
Enforce and support.
The Constitution and laws.
Constitution and laws.
Of the United States. The state of Michigan.
The state of Michigan.
And Cascade Charter Township.
Cascade Charter Township.
That I will protect the rights.
Protect the rights.
Lives and property.
Lives and property.
Of all citizens.
Of all citizens.
And uphold the honor.
Uphold the honor.
Of the fire profession.
Fire profession.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Firefighter.
Office of Firefighter.
For Cascade Charter Township.
Cascade Charter Township.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my abilities.
So, help me get it. Alright, congratulations. Kyle's wife's gonna come on up and pin your badge. Just like you practiced. Congratulations. Next, we're gonna bring up firefighter Kevin Delapaz. So, Kevin comes to us from the educational background. In the teaching background at Forest Hills Public Schools. My kids refer to him as Mr. Delapaz. He's gonna be firefighter Delapaz on our side of the fence. So, he brings that educational background, which came in handy because he absolutely aced the entry level firefighter test. I mean, I've never seen it score higher. So, good on him for that. He brings that big brain of his over. We could use it. Kevin's new to the fire profession, so we're excited about all the new things he gets to accomplish and start off with. But as a testament to his ability to catch on quickly, he's filling the temporary full-time firefighter role while another firefighter recovers. And John's in the crowd right now. So, it's keeping it in the family here. We're gonna bridge that gap and we could not be more excited for Kevin in the start of his career. Alrighty. Raise your right hand, repeat after me. I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will defend.
That I will defend.
Enforce and support.
Enforce and support.
The Constitution and laws.
Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The state of Michigan.
The state of Michigan.
And Cascade Charter Township.
And Cascade Charter Township.
That I will protect the rights.
That I will protect the rights.
Lives and property.
Lives and property.
Of all citizens.
Of all citizens.
And uphold the honor.
And uphold the honor.
Of the fire profession.
Of the fire profession.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Firefighter.
Of the Office of Firefighter.
For Cascade Charter Township. To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So, help me get it.
So, help me get it.
Congratulations. And Kevin's wife and daughter are gonna come and help him pin his badge. Congratulations. Alright, to wrap it up, we're gonna bring up Fire Chaplain Tim Devenbach to give you a closing prayer for it.
Thank you. Let's pray. Creator God, we are thankful for the gifts and talents that you have given to each of us. We ask your blessing upon Kyle and Kevin as they use their gifts and talents in service to others in the Cascade community. We pray for their safety and their service in the years to come. Continue to develop their skills as they serve with courage, wisdom, and compassion. We pray for your continued blessing upon all the men and women that they will serve alongside. Amen.
Amen. Gentlemen, welcome. And on behalf of Cascade, thank you so much. Thank you. You can lose three of you. And I'll choose if you.
We ran over Jade.
You should have had it at Fire Station Two. Next up is public comments. Now is the time to comment on anything that's already on tonight's agenda. Following the Board's deliberations, there'll be another opportunity to comment on anything, whether it's on the agenda or not. Now that everyone's left, does anyone wish to make a comment? Is there anyone virtually? Nope. Approval of consent agenda, Article Six. Is there a motion or discussion?
Motion to approve the consent agenda. Shipley supports.
It's a motion by trustee Kessel, supported by trustee Shipley to approve tonight's consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Article Seven, Financial Actions. Motion or discussion?
Shipley makes a motion to pay the invoices and complete the financial actions as presented.
Support.
It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee Nordhook to approve Article Seven's financial actions. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Having no unfinished business, Article Nine, New Business, Item Zero Five One, Twenty Twenty Four. Consider adoption of zoning amendment to Chapter Fourteen, Airport Commercial Overlay A. Manager Smith, an overview, please.
Sure. So, this is the second reading and adoption of an amendment to Chapter Fourteen. There was a change made in twenty twenty-three and there was an error. There was an intent to limit the permitted uses in overlay A to four listed uses. And the language that was in there, it allowed all uses. So, it's just cleaning up something that was done in twenty twenty-three. And this will be the final reading and adoption.
Discussion, questions, motions?
I think that this clarifies a lot of the discrepancies. And I make a motion that we adopt the zoning amendment as presented.
Support.
It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee Nordhook to adopt the zoning amendment to Chapter Fourteen of the Airport Commercial Overlay A as presented. Clerk Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Shipley.
Yes.
Trustee Castle.
Yes.
Treasurer Corstange.
Yes.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Nordhook.
Yes.
Clerk Slater, yes. Supervisor Lusprance.
Yes, motion carried. Item Zero Five Two, Twenty Twenty Four. Consider approval of library millage resolution. This is essentially a renewal to maintain the basic core functions of this building. But Manager Smith, could you provide us with an overview, please?
I'm actually gonna kick it to Finance Director Natarini, if that's okay?
Yep, thank you.
Good evening Supervisor and Board, Manager. As the request for Board action in your packet indicates, the millage that was voted on, approved in twenty thirteen has now expired. This millage is the large part of the funding for this building, both the library and this Wisner Center. It is just for the physical building and maintenance of the building. Capital items, say if we need a roof to be replaced. The inner workings of the library is handled by the Kent District Library. This is, in essence, a straight renewal of the point one five mills, which is a very small mill. Point one five mills adopted in twenty thirteen. Because of legalities, we have to call this a renewal of point one four seven nine mills and new mills of point zero zero two one. Can't believe we take things out to four digits, but that's government finance for you. And that's, this renewal and new is due to a headly rollback that happened a couple of years ago. So, we're looking to restore the full point one five mills that was voted on in twenty thirteen. There was a question a little earlier. This is recommended to go for a ten-year levy. And if you see, it's probably very small in your packet, the ten-year projection. At the end of year ten, we're looking at about a thirty-two percent fund balance, which I would call healthy, but not over the top, especially looking ahead ten years with a building that will probably need more maintenance and, say, roof replacements and parking lot replacements. So, this is the, our attorneys have recommended the language and approved all this. Sorry, I will stop rambling.
No, it's important. Thank you.
Just to add to this, I know this is only for the operations and the physical building itself, but I just want to talk about how successful this district library is and particularly this location. I got some statistics from the library director and how many programs that they offer out here and what the usage is throughout the township. And it's pretty staggering. I just was trying to find out my email and I don't have it, but I can send it to you. So, this is also a ten-year projection with a normal maintenance plan put forward. There was not much preventative maintenance that was done prior. We're making up for some of that in the next couple of years along with the refresh that's gonna happen in the interior of this building, both on this side and on the library side. That's all coming out of this millage too. So, the current millage is being put to good use in regards to the upkeep of this building.
Just to clarify, this millage renewal is not part of the Friendship Park that's being built out there?
That's correct trustee, as the request for Board action notes, this has nothing to do with the maintenance, creation, maintenance, or funding of Friendship Park.
Thank you.
I move to approve and adopt the resolution as presented.
I support.
It's a motion by trustee McDonald, supported by trustee Kessel, to approve the library millage resolution as stated. Clerk Slater, please call the roll.
Treasurer Corstange.
Yes.
Trustee Castle.
Yes.
Trustee Shipley.
Yay.
Trustee Nordhook.
Yes.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Clerk Slater, yes. Supervisor Lusprance.
Yes, motion carried. Item Zero Five Three, Twenty Twenty Four. Authorization to clear committed fund balance. Finance Director Natarini. Hand this one to you too. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor. As the request for Board action notes, these committed fund balances have been on the county, I'm sorry, on the township's books for quite some years. They were pointed out to me during the annual audit as just a normal audit question. Auditors pointed out three of those balances, questioned if we wanted to maintain them. And Doug Cradavell did mention that at the audit presentation, that these commitments are outstanding. We analyze the commitments, look back the history. And of the nine commitments that are on our books, I would recommend maintaining one of them that has to do with a very generous donation that we don't want to lose track of. And all of the other commitments, they're pretty much extraneous information. As the RBA says, we would lose nothing in terms of financial transparency. And we would not lose track of projects if these commitments were cleared. And that just gives us cleaner financial statements, less to manage, less to keep track of.
Less to be confused by.
There you go.
Comments? I'd like to thank the Financial Director and Jade and the Treasurer. Never before have we had such clarity in where the dollars are at and where we gotta spend them. Now, I'm very pleased as a taxpayer that they've come to this point. With that, I make.
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, with that, I would make a motion to give authorization to clear the committed fund balances as presented.
With the exception.
With the exception of the one, the donated funds.
Support. Further discussion? It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by Treasurer Corstange to approve the authorization to clear committed fund balances as stated in the packet. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you Director Natarini.
Thank you.
Item Zero Five Four, Twenty Twenty Four. Approval of contract with Carbon Six Construction for Construction Management Services for the interior renovation of this branch of the Kent District Library in Cascade Building. We have engineer Thorn with us tonight.
So, we had.
Did you want to say anything first before you?
Just about the project, because it seems like this hasn't come before the Board in recent months. But this is something that has been in the works for years. And Eric has picked up the ball and from a staff perspective and really sat in on the meetings and gotten involved. When we really haven't had a project lead on this project. So, I want to thank Eric for doing that. And then just let everybody know, this is what I was just referring to when we talked about the library millage, the library refresh. This is that project that's slated to be started this year. It won't be completed this year. Then I'll turn it over to Eric.
So, in the month of May, we advertised for Construction Management Service Contractor. We had planned that from the beginning. Currently, C two AE, the architectural and engineering company, had been working on that with the library. And they were at that course in their project schedule that it was time to bring on that Construction Services Manager. So, we took those proposals on June sixth. I reviewed those with Manager Smith. And we selected out of the three companies, we decided that Carbon Six had the best combination of experience, prior projects. They have a very good recent history of modernization and older buildings. I think something that was very in tune with what we were trying to do here at the library. And of course, they had a very friendly fee schedule. They submitted very reasonable prices for the type of work that they were doing. So, currently, what's going on with C two AE? And as we bring in the construction manager, they are in the preliminary design phase. I believe they have a schematic design right now and an estimate that is a touch over the budget. So, perfect time to bring in a construction manager. Part of the construction manager's job is to work on budget. It's to get scheduling, pre-qualified subcontractors. It's to do some of the finer details that lead us into and through construction eventually. So, with that said, Carbon Six out of the three again that I said, submitted proposals appeared to be the most advantageous for the township to take. And I'm here tonight to formally sign the contract or approve a contract to bring them on with the design team with C two AE, the township and the Kent District Library.
Yeah, go ahead Jim. Eric, do you know the Carbon Six?
I have never personally worked with Carbon Six. I had previously been with the city of Holland and when I left, they were in the middle of doing a renovation at City Hall there. So, I've seen their work firsthand. I've heard positive things about them. They have a list of references. I checked with at least two of the people on the list, all positive things to say about them.
Okay.
But no, I've never personally worked with them.
This is all a part of the refresh, isn't it Jim?
Yeah.
That we've talked about for past two or three years at least. And it includes everything, I believe, the lighting system to be upgraded.
It includes everything we can squeeze in that budget. Right now, I know it's furniture. Furniture is a big part of it. It's almost like a third of the budget, I believe, furniture. It's renovating some of the learning spaces. And then, yes, lighting's a big one. I know, I think it's a pretty high monthly cost right now, lighting. So, they want to modernize, bring in LED lights, more energy efficient, apply electronics.
The entryway, weren't they gonna redo the entryway?
That could very well be a part of it. I know on their schematic design, they kind of broke it down by, you know, this is what every, this is kind of what the library wants, what we all want. But this is what each part of it costs. So, like I said, it's a little over budget right now. So, I think that's probably a component of it. But whether or not it becomes a reality, I think, you know, it's a matter of how we end up squeezing those dollars at the end.
Family bathroom, I think, is.
Yep, that's been a talking point, yep.
Excellent. We're not gonna go over the budget, so they'll have to prioritize.
You know, I had the opportunity to come into the library a couple of times with my granddaughter for some of the programs. And I'm amazed how many families and young people come in and how well organized it is. With that, I would make a motion to approve the contract with Carbon Six. We got a good engineer that's on top of things. And Eric, you got my support. So, with that, I make a motion to approve the contract with Carbon Six for Construction Management Services for the renovation and the refresh, as some people call it, of the library.
Support.
It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee Nordhook to approve the contract with Carbon Six Construction for Construction Management Services related to the interior refresh of this building. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you Engineer Thorn.
You're welcome.
Having no discussion items, next would be public comments. Whether they're on, whether it's on tonight's agenda or not, welcome. And we'll see if anyone wants to comment in person and then we'll check virtually.
Ken Vandercock, seventy-two hundred Leighton. I've lived here about thirty-six years. And most of those years, we had a helicopter flying around spraying for gypsy moths. Why not this year? We out of money or we just aren't gonna do it? I've got caterpillars up and down my trees. The woods, I walk every night behind the school there, the woods is full of caterpillars.
Manager, or sorry, Melanie.
I can address some of my comments.
Okay, perfect. We'll address it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments in person or virtually?
One virtually, just a second. Go ahead Scott.
Hello, Scott Van Solkema. I'm sorry I wasn't, not there in person, unable to make it. I was curious if you guys knew that there was another crash at Twenty-Eighth and Old Twenty-Eighth just last night. I know it isn't, I know it's an M road, but, you know, there was two last month, you know, you know, one night and then another night, you know, the next night. And I was just wondering if there's anything else that we could do or maybe if, if there's any chance you guys can contact M dot or the Kent County Road Commission. I don't know if there needs to be more signage, but obviously, they took out a light last night. And I was just curious where, if any progress has been making, has been made with the hotel ordinance. Has anyone been out to actually speak with any of the hotel owners or managers as of late? Or if it's still in the very infant stage? Those were my two comments and concerns, just obviously the safety of that intersection. I do, I do walk that area and obviously, I believe these crashes are happening late at night. So, that, not that that's a good thing, but I don't know if maybe there's just not enough light or the signs aren't reflective enough. Or if it's just people going too fast and not paying attention. Obviously, I don't think we really need a guardrail there, but, you know, three crashes within a month, you know, pretty serious crashes is, you know, kind of scary. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Board, excuse me, manager comments?
Okay, a couple of things. I'll do my best to explain the gypsy moth decision. Under the guidance of our Parks Director and the DNR, it's recommended that, it's found that those sprays are ineffective. Gypsy moths have become basically what was once, they're more native now, considered a native insect now because they've been here for so long. So, that decision was made to not spray this year and being reevaluated every year moving forward. So, I can send some more information to you Ken and talk to you offline. But, and Melanie will have a better description of that as well. But I know that the DNR is not recommending spraying for them any longer. And most communities do not spray for them. I think Ada might, but I don't know any other local community.
Very small amount.
Yep. And just as many people that we had complaining about not having it sprayed, we had people calling with concern that what was being sprayed could also affect their children, their dogs, their pets, and other things, and vegetation. So, I don't know that you do actually win this because it's, some people are happy this way and some people are happy that way. But that was the decision that was made and we don't want the DNR guidance on that.
And there was a lot of concern about overspraying. And then, within the township, the same, within Cascade Township, Cascade Township was spraying much more, spending much more on the spongy moth, formerly gypsy moth program. But the hesitation we had on our end is that we were getting our guidance, our recommendations for the amount, the dollar amount from the actual guy who's doing the spraying. So, now we're looking to other resources like Kent County Conservation, just, you know, more of an independent opinion versus we're his best customer and we just write the check every year. So. And they are cyclical. Gypsy moths are naturally cyclical. So, we didn't abandon that, but at the same time, it is a kind of a no-win situation because we also had just as many complaints about overspraying. So.
And the DNR does have very good educational webinars that you can watch as well to learn the cycle.
And I think MSU Extension has some as well. Just a couple of other things. I want to congratulate the new firefighters that are coming on board. We missed the boat with Kyle though, because I really wanted him as the Building Facilities and Grounds Manager, but I didn't know he was actually looking for a job, but that's okay.
I think he was just looking at the fire station.
Want to make sure everybody is invited to Friendship Park grand opening on Saturday, dedication on Saturday. That's at eleven o'clock at the park. I drove by it today. They have a lot of work to do in the next two days. So, we'll be following up on that tomorrow. And I did find my email with some statistics. I just want to let you guys know how important I think this library is to the community that in the first two weeks of June, they had eight thousand eight hundred visitors, three thousand attending programs, and they checked out thirteen. Three thousand attending programs, and they checked out thirteen thousand physical books in the first two weeks of June. So I think that's pretty, that's pretty telling what the community thinks of this building and this facility. So I just wanted to get you guys that that data. And in front of you tonight is the draft master plan that will be up for consideration at the board level on the July tenth meeting. And I had emailed it all to you as well yesterday.
Thank you.
So. That's all I have tonight.
Does that have a few changes or a couple of changes that you talked about?
Yes, yes, yep.
So this is the most updated version?
The most updated after the planning commission looked at it after the public comment period was closed and. Recommendations were put into this plan.
What about hotel ordinance? I can't, when does that's?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Make effect.
So, well. I mean, it's in effect, but we still have to work through the policy. So we're actually meeting weekly to put together that program, the policy, the checklist, the fee, you name it, who's gonna, you know, spearhead it. So. We're on week three of those meetings with the sheriff's office, the fire department, internal staff, our zoning administrator. And from there, it says that we have to have them notified by October first. So we still have a little bit, but it's. It's it's, we're we're well on our way. And you will know, because I'll be coming back before you to get the fee approved. For the application before we go out and start enforcing it.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Board member comments?
I'll stand up. Thanks for coming down, Mr. Richardson. Nice to see you again today. Commissioner, nice to see you. I think we missed you once or twice this year so far. And bring your neighbors down next time. And anybody out there in Zoom lane, thanks for tuning in. All right.
Any other comments? I'll make a quick response to Mr. Van Solkema's question. It is odd that we've had several accidents on that old Twenty-Eighth Street. Near either Twenty-Eighth Street or Cascade Road, but. It's drugs and alcohol, middle of the night. It's not a safe, it's not a design issue. And frankly, I don't think that we know of, there's nothing that the township can do differently. It's drugs and alcohol, and people need to kind of accept responsibility and watch their speed and make good choices. But this isn't really, we'll continue to do our job. As a township and with work with the road commission, but this is not something that the Board of Trustees can. Can fix, so.
And for anybody that is wondering, we do file a claim and go after. The the operators for instances where they prep, they ruin township property like the light. And they actually did hit a separate tree.
Yeah.
Different one than what.
Oh, we're just lucky that it's in the middle of the night, but. Thank goodness for that, because it would be a lot different. Same with people who are crossing the intersect, crossing Cascade Road. In between two of the actual pedestrian crosswalks. If you don't go to one of the pedestrian car crosswalks, like some maybe. User error. We work with the road commission, but to just prematurely come and wind to the board like it's something that we're not doing. No. We've heard that in campaign slogans in different places, but we're doing everything on our end. People just need to make good choices and accept responsibility. Any other comments? Motions?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Your board need to draw.
Motion by Clerk Slater, supported by trustee Shipley, to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.